We're going to call our meeting in order. It's Tuesday, August 12th. It's nine o'clock for the public works. And we're going to do an invitation following by the Premier Leader.
Father Bates, please.
Let us pray. Gracious and sovereign God, as we gather this morning, we pause to acknowledge your presence and to seek your wisdom. Grant this council discernment and unity. May their decisions be guided by a vision of shared flourishing where infrastructure, safety, and opportunity extend to all who call our city home. Bless everyone he serves, our elected officials or city staff, our volunteers, and all who labor for the welfare of Mexico Beach. Protect our fair city from harm, strengthen our bonds of neighborlessness, and inspire us to steward your resources with care. In all this, I pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord Jesus to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father Bates, thank you. By no means do we take you for granted. We appreciate you being here today. Again, start with Roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hamilton?
Here.
Mayor Wolf?
Here.
And Mr. Fasaghi is excused today.
First thing on the agenda is the minutes. There's quite a few minutes there, about seven different events. I'm sure the council went through them. July the 11th, a budget meeting. July the 18th, budget meeting. July 22nd, council meeting. July 24th, AVCON workshop. July 25th, budget meeting. August the 4th, budget meeting. And August the 5th, food truck workshop. Are there any changes to the minutes?
No, sir.
The minutes are approved?
Yep.
Moving on the agenda, just kind of, just to set the tone here, we're going to go through these nine ordinances. And somewhat of it, if we need to have discussion, we'll have discussion about them, but they're non-ordinate. The stuff we're going to go through that take a long time. There can be like 18 different votes, so it's going to take some time. But I think we'll get through them all. Starting with number one, request annex 33.240 acres of Farmdale. These parcel, second reading, ordinance 854. Then open to the public. No questions from the public, close the public. Open discussion at the table. No discussion at the table. Motion to read ordinance 854 by title only?
Make a motion when we read ordinance 854 by title only. I'll second it.
Motion of second. Can we take a roll, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance number 854. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of a portion of parcel identification number 04102-200-000. Providing a legal description of the lands to be annexed, more specifically described in this ordinance as petitioned by the property owner pursuant to section 171.044 Florida statutes. Providing for the redefining of the city boundaries to include said lands, making certain findings, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
City Attorney, can we move to the motion to approve or deny? Do we need to go back to open?
Open the public.
No, you can just go on to...
For a motion to approve, deny?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 854.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Request amend the future land use map, same acreage, on ordinance 857. Then open that to the public. Close the public. Open the discussion at the table. No discussion at the table. Motion to read by title only?
Make a motion to read ordinance 857 by title only.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Can we take a roll, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance 857. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan future land use map, redesignating a parcel of property consisting of approximately 33.240 acres immediately abutting the south right of Highway 98 and east of the western right of Crooked Sound Drive, Mexico Beach, Florida. A portion of parcel identification number 04102-200-000. From Bay County Conservation to Mexico Beach tourist mixed use, providing for scrubbers errors and liberal construction, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion to approve or deny ordinance 860?
857.
Oh, I'm sorry. 857?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 857.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
The next one, Mayor, if you remember, is quasi-traditional, so anyone who speaks would have to be sworn in. Assuming your statements made by the council previously that you've not communicated with the applicant will still be relevant unless somebody else on the council's had any discussions.
No. Nobody in the council? Okay, is there any in the audience who can speak on this ordinance? That needs to be sworn in? Mr. Attorney, is that good?
That's good.
Okay. Moving on for the amendment to zoning map for ordinance 860. Open for discussion for the public. Close the public. Open discussion at the table. A motion to approve or motion to read 860?
Make a motion to read ordinance 860 by title only.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance number 860. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map, designating a parcel of property consisting of approximately 33.240 acres immediately abutting the south right of Highway 98 and east of the western right of Crooked Sound Drive, Mexico Beach, Florida. A portion of parcel identification number 04102-200-000 as Mexico Beach tourist mixed use, providing for scrubbers errors and liberal construction, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
A motion to approve or deny ordinance 860?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 860.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Request annex same acreage. That's in ordinance 855. Then open that to the public. No public comments. Close the public. Any discussion at the table? Motion to read ordinance 855?
I'll make a motion to read ordinance 855 by title only.
I'll second it.
Motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance number 855. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of a portion of parcel identification number 04102-200-000. Providing a legal description of the lands to be annexed, more specifically described in this ordinance as petitioned by the property owner pursuant to section 171.044 Florida statutes. Providing for the redefining of the city boundaries to include said lands, making certain findings, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
A motion to approve or deny ordinance 855?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 855.
I'll second it.
Motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Request amend the future map, same acreage, in ordinance 858. Then open that to the public. Close the public. Open discussion at the table. Motion to read by title only, 858?
Make a motion to read ordinance 858 by title only.
I'll second it.
Motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance 858. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan future land use map, redesignating a parcel of property consisting of approximately 32.163 acres located immediately south of 5501 Highway 98 and west of the western right of Crooked Sound Drive, Mexico Beach, Florida. A portion of parcel identification number 04102-200-000. From Bay County Conservation Habitat to Mexico Beach tourist mixed use, providing for scrubbers errors and liberal construction, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
A motion to approve or deny ordinance 858?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 858.
I'll second it.
Motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
So, is anybody at the table who's had any discussion or anything that needs to be sworn in?
No.
Is that good?
Yes, sir.
Anybody in the audience want to speak on this? Nobody from the audience? Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. Moving on to zoning map in ordinance 861. Open to the public. Close to the public. Discussion at the table. Motion to read ordinance 861 by title only?
Make a motion to read ordinance 861 by title only.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance number 861. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map, designating a parcel of property consisting of approximately 32.163 acres located immediately south of 5501 Highway 98 and west of the western right of Crooked Sound Drive, Mexico Beach, Florida. A portion of parcel identification number 04102-200-000 as Mexico Beach tourist mixed use, providing for scrubbers errors and liberal construction, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
A motion to approve or deny ordinance 861?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 861.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Request annex approximately 7.14 acres. This is a commercial parcel. Second reading of ordinance 856. Open the public. Close the public. Open discussion at the table. No discussion at the table. Do we have a motion to read ordinance 856 by title only?
Make a motion to read ordinance 856 by title only.
Second.
Motion of second. Can we take a roll, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance 856. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of parcel identification number 04102-200-010. Providing a legal description of the lands to be annexed, more specifically described in this ordinance as petitioned by the property owner pursuant to section 171.044 Florida statutes. Providing for the redefining of the city boundaries to include said lands, making certain findings, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve or deny ordinance 856?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 856.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
A motion to amend the future land use map, same acreage, ordinance 859. Open to the public. Close to the public. Discussion at the table. Motion to read 859 by title only?
Make a motion to read ordinance 859 by title only.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance 859. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan future land use map, redesignating a parcel of property located at 5501 Highway 98 consisting of approximately 7.2 acres and having parcel identification number of 04102-200-010. From Bay County mixed use to Mexico Beach tourist mixed use, providing for scrubbers errors and liberal construction, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve or deny 859?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 859.
I'll second it.
A motion of second. Take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
The next one, Mayor, is quasi-traditional.
Thank you, sir. Okay, ordinance 862 is the same thing. Do everybody in the audience who needs to speak on that? Nobody from the audience? Anybody from the table had any discussions? Good at the table? Good in the audience? Ordinance 862. Then open to the public discussion. No public discussion. Close the public. Discussion at the table. No discussion at the table. A motion to read by title only, ordinance 862?
I'll make a motion to read ordinance 862 by title only.
I'll second it.
A motion of second.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Ordinance 862. An ordinance of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map, designating a parcel of property located at 5501 Highway 98 consisting of approximately 7.2 acres and having a parcel identification number of 04102-200-010 as Mexico Beach tourist mixed use, providing for scrubbers errors and liberal construction, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
A motion to approve or deny ordinance 862?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 862.
I'll second it.
A motion of second.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
That is complete on the nine ordinance for Farmdale.
Yes, sir. Can we all get a draw? We have to send the annexations to the council.
All right, moving on to number 10. On the agenda, law enforcement service agreement. Mr. Mal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our current law enforcement agreement with the Sheriff's Department of Bay County expires the end of September. The agreement that you had before you, after review by the City Attorney and myself, is virtually the same that we've had in previous years. It does provide for seven deputies and, of course, a lieutenant to make able parole officers. There were a couple of spelling errors in that. Those have since been corrected, so no problem there. The amount of 1.304, 360 million is in our budget for 2026, the preliminary budget that is. So, we recommend the approval of the agreement, which is a one-year agreement with an automatic one-year addition. So, in essence, it's a two-year agreement. So, any questions, concerns?
Now, open that to the public. Anything on the public? Anybody want to speak on that? No comments from the public? Close the public. Any discussion at the table? The only difference is the price increase, which includes the additional officer and a couple of spelling errors that we'll get corrected before we sign. I think you said that. If we're good, do we have a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion that we approve the law enforcement service agreement for 25, 26.
It may be extended.
And may be extended.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion of second. Can we take a roll, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. On agenda item number 11. Canal Parkway cul-de-sac. Mr. Mal?
Yes, sir. You all are aware that when it comes to parking to access the beach at Canal Parkway, the St. Joe Company did put a parking lot at the area where the Canal Parkway bends down to the south. And that has parking spaces for quite a few people. We also have our own parking lot between that and MX-1. So, there's two places to park and access the beach. One of the problems that we've had over the years is that if you go down to the end of Canal Parkway, if parking on both sides of the road, it's very hard to get out of that. For people who have a crew cab truck like I do, if you pull into a spot, you can't just back out and pull forward. You've got to back out, pull forward, back out, pull forward, et cetera, et cetera, make a multi-point turn to get out of it. So, that leads to a question, how to fix that issue? And the way to fix it, which was proposed as a conceptual plan that you see on the screen. We've got a makeshift cul-de-sac there now that in no way conforms to our local land development codes. So, in conversation with the St. Joe Company and our consulting engineers at Anchor, the conversation was how to make a proper radius to take care of issues and try not to do away as much parking as possible. But some of that property is on the St. Joe property. They have agreed that if we proceed with this particular cul-de-sac, then they would add this to their current lease with the city. So, it wouldn't be property the city would own, but we would lease it from them. So, we asked our engineers to come to the meeting today to ask for any questions that you might have concerning this cul-de-sac. So, would you like to address any issues with this at all or just go for questions?
We don't need to ask questions. It's pretty straightforward.
All right, Elizabeth Morris from our engineering group, and she'll answer any questions. We're going to open to the public any public conversation on the cul-de-sac. Come on up.
John Harold, you know where I live, right? 43 First Street. A couple of questions. How much of the St. Joe property will we have to take? Or lease? Or is it a lease? We're going to pay for it?
Everybody open the lease. We haven't negotiated that. I doubt if we'd pay for it.
How much of their property? Do you know?
Well, you can see it up here. We have a casualty of it exactly, but...
Well, my que... Then, is it a lot or...
No, it's not a lot. It's outside of this line right here. That's what the company said.
And is that going to be paved?
That's up to the city, but that's what we've recommended.
That probably would be the plan.
At our expense? And I'll repeat this, like I say about the boat lamp. What if they decide to take it back for development later? What do we do then? Is that being considered?
It has to be along those lines, obviously.
Okay. Just, that's my concern, is we don't own it. They won't sell it to us. They won't donate it to us. So, they may have future plans for it. I want this council to keep that in mind, please. At any time with our lease, they can take it back. And if we put the money into it and then they take it back, we're back to where we are, just a 14-point turn with your super cab.
Bless them right of a lifetime, or at least some type of lease along that lines.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Logan, did you have something? Come on up.
Thank you. You answered my question.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then, will you close the public discussion? Did you have anything else?
No, the only other item is that we didn't put in the abstract that we've estimated the cost of paying that at $150,000. That's just our estimate at this point.
Okay, moving to discussion at the table. I might all have something to say. I'll go ahead and start. Obviously, there was a problem at the end of Canal Street, so that's what we were trying to address, the problem. It might not have been a problem for a resident living down on Georgia or living on 19th Street or 20th Street unless they go down there. But it was a problem for the residents living on that street because there's no way to turn around. It was in... The street ended, and they're parking on the left and the right, and you couldn't back out cars. Did they get by with it? Yeah, they got by with it. But you'd see boats backing up, you'd see trails backing up once they get down there, coming down the street, backing all the way back up. Or they'd be pulling on the grass of the residents or the driveways of the residents. So, there was something to address. So, the way that we did it, we tried to temporary... Temporary is six or seven months, I think. It's been a long time. So, it was time to move and decide what we want to do. If you look at today's society, there are... I don't believe that there are streets that developers build that dead-end unless it has a cul-de-sac on it. So, you... So you can come in and come out. They don't just build a street and end it. They did and passed. So putting a cul-de-sac down there allows people to go down to the end, turn around, they could pull in, drop maybe four or five people out of the car off, take their car back up and park in the parking lot. There's some question about the temporary parking or the lease or the land or parking lot that we have through Saint Joe company. They put a temporary parking lot in there for sixty spaces. I went down there a few times over the weekends and it's been pretty crowded. So they are using it. Is there a possibility that Saint Joe company can take that away? Yes. But the deal was, when we made the deal, was that they would build a parking lot for us on that side of the street. So it isn't like the parking lot goes away forever. It's gonna be somewhere over there. We also, like city administrator said, we also have MX one parking lot. We're taking about eight spaces, I think, right now. Six, seven, or eight spaces. And there's probably fifteen to twenty in MX one if we had to use that and it's our own land, so... That's my take on it. The other thing is, there's been some comments about it being a roundabout. This is not a roundabout. A roundabout has intersections with traffic coming in and out. All we're doing is taking it in and taking it out. That's my say, Your Honor. Jump in, anybody?
Yeah, I am concerned about the temporary parking lot and the cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And part of it is to help feed people from that temporary parking lot to the cul-de-sac. You know, we just don't really know what all Saint Joe's gonna build in there. I think we would be more wise to wait to see what Saint Joe's gonna do and then consider our parking situation. I'm not in favor of it. I think it causes a lot of congestion down there. It's taking away a certain amount of parking spots down there. And the cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is quite alarming to me.
How do you resolve the problem with it?
You know, just leave the situation, go back to the original parking and eliminate the cul-de-sac that we're trying to create right now and just, you know, see what's gonna happen. I'm just concerned about how closely will Saint Joe's property encroach on that whole area? I think we need to just sit back and wait and see what that's gonna be. Because it's a temporary parking lot and we're gonna create a cul-de-sac to accommodate people to go there from the temporary parking lot and spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. I just, I don't agree with it. I think we need to just sit back and wait.
Do you believe Saint Joe agreed to build a parking lot for us?
What way's it gonna be?
On the other si... On the south side of ninety-eight.
I would wait to see when that happens. Yeah, I just, I don't... I think we're rushing that situation and we should need to give more time to see what actually is gonna be built. And I think the cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money for that.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do recognize that we have serious parking issues throughout town and the fact that what the city, we've got basically a public use area at the end of that street that is a one dead-end. The re... I can't imagine living on that street in the middle of summer. I've driven down there some weekends and frankly, even with the temporary parking lot that Saint Joe built, it's chaos down there. I mean, that's the only way you can put it. I don't like the idea of the hundred and fifty thousand, much like Mr. Harold said. I'm concerned about, and this is actually a question for the attorney, if they're attaching it to our boat ramp lease, our long-term lease, how concrete is that lease? Is it an easy out for them to say, you know, we're giving you twenty-four months notice and we're taking away your boat ramp or taking away your cul-de-sac? That would be my concern. Is it a needed change? Yes. Do I hit the hundred and fifty thousand? Yes. But we gotta do something to help the residents on that road. And just any other tourists and sightseers that drive down in there to see what's down there. And then they're driving their Chevy Suburban with a... One of those tailgate hitch things with luggage and everything on it. And guess what? Now they can't turn around. So they're back across someone's front yard, whatever. We gotta do something. But I think the council, we owe it to the citizens to try to firm up our lease with the Saint Joe company if we're going to shroud. And that's all I've got.
My comments on it. I go down there every morning. One is the parking lot. We've talked about it. There was a big, some contention when that parking lot went in. And there was a two-year window or a three-year window put on that parking lot. You know, we kinda... I wasn't here, but Saint Joe was asked to put the lot in to help service the apartments and some other things. Luckily, they've left it open to everybody, anybody that wants to park there. That's the way I understand it. I do believe it's gonna... I feel like one of my last, you know, that it's gonna create more traffic on the Canal Parkway. And the reason why I do that, I think that is people are kinda used to it. And I know they get hemmed up down there if they don't know what they're doing. But once you realize that you have this, I think it's gonna create more traffic through the road because people are gonna know they have a place to turn around. It's just one of my thoughts on it. Also, I don't know, the money-wise, I know we've kinda budgeted one fifty for it. But initially, when it came up, I thought this is gonna cost, I think it's gonna be more than one fifty. I don't know, so I can't speak on that yet, but that was another concern. Like I said, I think the main thing is, I mean, I know Saint Joe's company is gonna build a parking lot on their land whenever they build Bonfire Beach and everything. We've seen it. And then this was that parking lot there was a little temporary for their people. But what is that parking lot gonna do for the city? Is it a... Take it as gonna be public? The future one? You know, the master parking lot, I would call it, that's gonna go there at some point whenever they develop inside of it.
Jason, and like you, actually, I was on planning and zoning when we kinda pushed them down the road. We wanted a drop-dead date. The residents on Canal Parkway wanted a drop-dead date for that quote temporary parking lot that's there now. I think the only stipulation for that three-year window was they had to come back to the city within thirty-six months with their final plan for their permanent quote beach parking lot. As I recall.
So, and Elizabeth, the other part, I mean, you've worked out or y'all talked to Saint Joe company, you have now. When you talk about this cul-de-sac, I was trying to look through the LDR. Is this cul-de-sac? Is it... Can you turn fire trucks to the radius and everything? Is it set? You said you did it by our specs.
Yes, that one.
Anyway, that was my few things that I had. I'd like to, right now, I'd like to hold off on it. Especially with the money and the budget and thinking it's gonna be... I think it's gonna be more.
Well, we're here to solve problems, so bringing it back to where it was, I don't think it solves the problem, but that's the way the council wants it moved. I'm all for it. If you want to hold off and gather more information, as far as the lease, if you want to not have a lease and go after Saint Joe and tell them we want the land, we can do that too. I mean, there's other options. The real question is, is it the right thing to do or not? If we want to go back to exactly how it was, then be prepared to take it exactly like it was. And I'm okay with that. That's the way the council wants it moved.
I'm okay with it like it... I mean, it's always been that way. I understand the congestion, but I still think that's a limited number of congestion. Once the spots are filled, I know somebody can get hemmed up. You know, this would get them out of there. But I'm also, like I said, I am concerned about just inviting more and more traffic down that parkway. Because it is, that parking lot that Saint Joe built was, there was a sunset put in that cause. And the name, the people that live on the Canal Parkway, they didn't want, they wanted the sunset in there, but they didn't want the parking lot.
I think, I think there again, and we could go back and review the conversation, what the residents, number one, I'm not sure the residents actually want our public use area down at the end of that road either, but it's there. And what they didn't want is they didn't want their Canal Parkway to be quote the permanent beach access point for everything on the north side of ninety-eight. We're gonna have tur... We're gonna have tourists that are looking for a place to get to the beach. I mean, we've all lived here long enough to know that what happens, the east side of town, the park is quickly pulled, there's nowhere to park. Sunset Park, there's nowhere to park. So they're looking for a place to access the beach. And I would tend to agree, if I lived on Canal Parkway, I wouldn't want that to be a beach access point during the months from Memorial Day to Labor Day. I would not want that. But that's the way it is right now. And frankly, that's the way it's gonna be in the future. And to your point, Mayor, we're not, we're kicking the can down the road if we don't do something. What we're saying to the residents and to the tourists is, we don't care that you have a problem if we don't act on it. That's my view. You know, we held Saint Joe to the fire saying, this temporary solution is not, the people on Canal Parkway don't want traffic coming down their road. And they don't want sixty or seventy or eighty cars parking down there, walking up and down their street during tourist season. And that's why the P and Z, and then ultimately, I think the council supported that decision to make it a temporary parking lot, is my long-term future plan is to provide an access road that does not take people to parking down Canal Parkway. We will still have our local nice pavilion area that people are gonna go to. They're gonna, the people that come here every year are gonna know this up there and they know their kids can fish right there in the canal. So they're gonna go there. Question is, are those people then gonna have access to Saint Joe's new parking lot, wherever that goes? So I don't know. I don't see kicking the can down the road.
I saw, I went down there one of the holiday weekends, there was like fifty-two cars in that parking lot. So if those fifty-two cars were not in that parking lot, they would be somewhere in the city. If those fifty-two cars had two people in each one, those sixty-four people would be on the beach on the, on the east side. The west side, you have to see a lot of fishermen on the west side. And it's the only beach in Metro Beach that's allowed abdulcs. So that beach is gonna get used. We put a pavilion down there with chairs and bathrooms and everything else. How can we ignore it's not a, not gonna be a tourist area? It is. Why did we build that?
Go ask my board.
Just another thought, too. When we get our pier one day, don't you think that would take some of the traffic off of that? That they'd be going down to the pier to do fishing?
Sure. Absolutely.
To me, it's like a wait-and-see how it's gonna all develop. I kinda think the cul-de-sac down there too, I kinda would worry about the safety of children maybe coming down from the pavilion or coming off of the beach. Because if you got big vehicles making big circles and all that, that would be concerning to me.
Well, if you're concerned about that, putting parking spaces back together that right next to it would be a lot worse.
But it's worked.
Well, again, counsel, I am open to whatever you want to do. You want to table it and get some of the questions like the lease versus us owning the land? Or if you wanna get some more information on the cul-de-sac versus putting the parking back? What do you want to do?
Well, what about just waiting and giving it more time to see what develops with Saint Joe? Where they're gonna eventually put that parking lot? If they put that parking lot further to the west, you know, then that could bring in a whole different issue once they give us the parking lot. If they try to get it closer to where all those homes are, where all the VR Horton townhouses, that would make sense anyway that they would build it further down.
You still have that MX one parking lot.
Yeah. Right.
So I'll just ask the rest of the council this question. If we take Saint Joe out of the equation, let's say they were willing to give us the land. If we just take them out of the equation, do we think that somehow that eliminates our parking problem at the end of Canal Parkway? And look, eight months out of the year, we have no parking problem at the end of Canal Parkway. But just like the rest of the city, eight months out of the year, we have no parking problems throughout the city. But during the tourist season, it's chaos. It's not as bad if you live four blocks off the beach. But it, especially through the crux of the areas where we have created parks, there were parks before Michael, there's parks after Michael. We built Sunset Park. We built that at the end of Canal Parkway. People are gonna use it. So are we gonna ignore it? I personally am prepared, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I make a motion, we table it until we can do some more investigation as far as what Saint Joe's willing to, as far as language in the lease? And get some more detail about when they do do their thing, five, ten, who knows when they're gonna do it, ten years down the road? What's that gonna mean for us at that point? Are we gonna have to revisit the issue? That's what I would do. So I'm making a motion to table it for thirty or sixty days until we can get our ducks in the road.
That motion table it?
Could we get Tim's thoughts on that, too? I see.
Now, Mayor, let's finish the motion.
Well, we need to make sure I understand what your motion is. Is it to table it until that due diligence is done?
Yes, sir.
Or for a particular time? I think you need to set a deadline. You can always take it.
Okay, I'll rephrase the motion. I'll make a motion that we table it for thirty days to give us time to do some due diligence regarding the lease and what our other options might be to provide relief on the parking side for what the city has created down there. We created this situation. So that's my recommendation as far as a motion.
A motion to table it for thirty days for a second? No second? Motion's gone? Are there any other motions? Cooper deny?
I mean, we're gonna have to make a decision here. Because what, obviously, we're, the motions are flowing around. I mean, tabling it lets us look at it longer, but I just can't, I'm just not on board with it right now.
Then make a motion, Jason.
All right, I'll make a motion that we do away with the temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Canal Parkway.
Jason, motion taken. Take away. And there's a second. Vote, please.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf?
No.
Or stalemate, we kill.
It does not pass, that's for sure. No, it's a...
Yeah.
You didn't get on the draw.
No, right.
Notion fails.
Okay, is there another solution? We have a motion to table it. We have a motion to deny it. One motion, is there another motion that we want to move forward with that would give us a different table in two weeks? Five people at the table? Is there, I'm gonna make your motions. Any other discussion?
No, I feel like we've had enough time. I mean, you know, Mr. Cox was the one that wanted to table it for a few things, but we've given this, this has been since last November. It's been there, temporary, it's not been talked about, and then we bring it up with the best of money with Ms. Moore to do some homework on it. I don't know what else we could, you know...
If we're having discussion, I was not on the council in November. So, okay, I was not on the council, but here's what I would say. We put a temporary solution there. We know that would improve the traffic. I don't know, I'll use the term again. Are we gonna just ignore the problem? That's what we're doing. If we don't do, if we don't do something down there, we're ignoring the problem.
But we say, okay, it's discussed, I guess we'll let it go a little bit. Mayor, do you mind if I speak?
No, absolutely, go ahead.
I mean, every, the south side, the south end of, or the south side of ninety-eighth are there. All the roads are dead ends into the beach. I mean, I know this is a little more...
This is deeper.
This is a little deeper, but when you drive down, you know, when I drive down Portia Street... This is a little deeper, but when you drive down, you know, when I drive down Portia Street, I work on there.
And what does every person that lives on that street, if I lived on a dead-end street on Thirty-Ninth Street, have to say?
It's terrible.
It's terrible. They hate having people backing up in their driveways, on their lawns, I mean, everywhere else. A dead-end street should have a cul-de-sac on it to go in and get out.
Okay, and, and to that point, Jason, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to offer ideas to solve problems, right? It's not just the south side, we've got dead-end streets on the north side. There was never a plan for managing the traffic at the end of the street. No one ever thought fifty years ago that there would be a traffic issue. Well, now there's traffic issues. So, if the council has the appetite for it, I don't know how you, now that things are built out, how do we engineer and put a cul-de-sac at the end of all our dead-end streets? And what's that gonna cost?
Yeah.
The, the answer I have to the other dead-end streets is, the other dead-end streets have a public use area at the end of the road.
Well, I get that, and, and it goes back to, let's not stray off, we're trying to, we're sending these people to a parking lot that, I mean, we own a little piece by MX one, that used to have bathrooms there, I don't know how much parking it really had there, but we're sending them to the parking lot and we put a sunset date on it. I mean, the cul-de-sac, I guess, getting traffic out, yes, it works. But we're talking about trying to put people somewhere else. We don't have anywhere else to put them.
If you're saying the parking lot is the problem, then that's what we need to get a solution to. If we get thirty days to hold it, we can look at Saint Joe and say, hey, look, our council is questioning the time that, that we have this parking lot for, to make the decision on the cul-de-sac. Can you give us a decision here so we make a decision on the cul-de-sac? We can do that in the next thirty days.
Mayor, I think that's about a point. And I, like the rest of the council, I'm concerned about the budget. And I don't want us to throw a hundred and fifty or two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred grand, whatever that thing ends up costing, just flush it down the toll. What I'm really advocating here is that we find a permanent solution. If we're gonna stick to our guns, and, because we're the ones that put the timeline on Saint Joe, because the residents on that street didn't want a parking lot.
That's why we put the timeline.
That's why we put the timeline on Saint Joe. But what I'm saying now is, is things evolve. Are we, we still want Saint Joe to have there on the parking lot. But I think this council and the residents of this town might come back a year or two from now and say, you know what? That parking lot makes a lot of sense. And maybe when they decide to put their parking lot in, we don't get rid of that parking lot. I don't know. But I do know that we just can't keep, to the mayor's point, saying, well, we'll just kick, just, just wait till next year. How many more tourists we gonna have next year? I think we gotta solve the problem, just like I think we have to address Sunset Park as well.
It may end going back to the original, but I think we ought to try to answer the questions that you have. How much does it cost? Can we get the land? I mean, if we can answer those questions, then, then it's a solution. But if we just drop it, we go back to where it was.
Exactly, and, and Mayor, to your point, that, that parking lot now has a sunset date on it. Well, Saint Joe is in business, you can bet that there's been, the clock's ticking. They've got some idea generically, and so we need to have a conversation. If you're willing to give us the long-term lease, okay, you're gonna move your parking lot to here in two more years, that means they're gonna have to put a road in. And it's gonna have to, you know, people are gonna know that this is where you get to the beach. Maybe we can then have access, ask them, are we gonna have access to use their parking lot? You know, we hadn't discussed that. When, when they came before P and Z, all we talked about was they wanted to put, you know, there was an outcry for parking. And, and I just, I just think, you know, we, we need to, to give it some time, because we're putting our head in the sand if we think this is just gonna go away. We got it. Frankly, I think it's probably even nicer than Sunset Park, plus at the end of the Canal Parkway down there. That use area, I mean, you can walk right out on the jetty, I mean, it's, people use it. You go down there every day, Jason.
Oh, I do. Until I, if I turn that front first bend and I see it within my mouth, if you really wanna know the truth. But regardless, it's, it gets back to, you said, talking about Saint Joe's parking lot. If you wanna give it a few more weeks or a month, but if you look at their master plan on that side of the road, where that parking lot is now is, from what I've seen.
Has not changed.
No, I'm talking about the parking lot, the temporary one, that's part of their master development. They have something else planned there. They have a parking lot further closer to the beach.
The parking lot's gonna go away.
Yes.
There's a possibility that at the end of that cul-de-sac, their land is right west of that. The parking lot may be able to access right into that cul-de-sac. There's a possibility, I don't know. We'll have to see what their plan is, but.
I mean, to me, that has a huge impact on whether we spend any money to pay a cul-de-sac. That's really what we're talking about. We got a dirt cul-de-sac there now, right? Is Santa?
I mean, yeah, part of it.
Should be chill. All right, do we have, do you wanna relook at any motions to try again?
Well, the consensus is, I mean, Steve's, I mean, he can't make a motion again, I mean. Eric's not here, so I mean, I'll make a motion, I'll go back and make the motion that we get the thirty days now.
You have a second?
Thirty days, to a given.
Thirty days to do, to do, due diligence, to finish out the due diligence on this, you know? It to, to try to get the, the cost, one. Try to, if, the, the parking lot is one of my biggest things.
Well, and, and, and it shouldn't be one of all of our biggest things, because if that, to the mayor's point, and he, he used fifty-two cars. Two, two people per car, that's a hundred and four people, okay? Those people are gonna go to the beach somewhere. And if that parking lot goes away, and we, we need to know as a community, if, if, long-term, when Saint Joe puts their beach parking lot, their permanent master planned parking lot, are we gonna have access to it? And if the answer's no, then that raises a bigger question for this council, I think.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion, second? Do you understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
No.
Mayor Wal?
Yes.
I'd like permission from the council to go to Saint Joe Company and talk with them about this, but about the parking lot, is everybody okay with that?
So, Jason, if you say you know a little bit about what Saint Joe's gonna develop there, is that open to the public, so we would all know what all's gonna come?
I'm looking at the board that we have had at City Hall for quite a while for that area, and that's where I came, I don't know.
To me, it would make more sense to kinda know what's gonna be developed there before we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, I mean, there's a motion that's passed, but, I mean, the money is a, a huge, obviously, thing to do.
And that might help us lower the military level if we didn't have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand plus on that.
Okay, is it, is it, is the council okay with me having a conversation with Saint Joe Company and, and the city administrators about this?
Or how about we have Saint Joe come to a public meeting and we can all hear what they have to say? Would that work?
We could force them to do that, sure.
Let's do that.
We're gonna have some conversation with them prior to that.
Why would that be necessary? Why couldn't they just come to a meeting and probably everybody can hear what they have to say?
We'll pick up the phone and tell them what we're doing and why we want them to come. So, we're gonna have a conversation with them over the phone.
Email would be nice.
We're gonna have a conversation one-on-one. All right.
And Mayor, I would remind you, I had drafted an easement to do somewhat of what Mr. Cox was talking about, to provide for the transition to the permanent parking, and I've gotten crickets on their side as far as response to it.
All right, moving on to the cul-de-sac. All right, American ground lease proposal, Mr. Mall.
Thank you, Your Honor. You all know that the tower that's directly behind us is, we've leased that out for a number of years now. The intent of this lease is not to take the place of that, but behind the fences in their leased area, there's a propane tank. Since the installation of that propane tank, the federal regulations have changed so that there's an area that they have to make sure there is nothing in its way. I think the circular area around that tank takes the safety area about ten feet outside of that fenced area, and what they propose is, we cannot put a building there which is permanent, which in, in the case of an explosion, would, would be harmed. We could park equipment there, that sort of thing, but this lease would prohibit any permanent installations in that, uh, leased area. The one hundred dollar fee is a one-time payment, and that is in no longer, I mean, in no way changes the lease that we currently have. So, any questions about that particular agreement?
We have the public, any questions from the public, honor? Close the public, move the table. The only question I have is the one time. You currently receive a thousand a month for the current, probably lease, right? Which is an open lease?
I don't know the exact amount, Mayor. I can tell you.
There is an annual kicker for that.
There is an annual fee to it. This, what they're proposing.
Not monthly, it's annual?
I believe so.
'Cause this is, this one sixty degree just, the one-time, one hundred, right?
Yes, sir.
And then you put on to the open lease.
Correct.
So, the overall open lease, whether it was yearly, whatever, would stay the same.
You know, the annual, the, the lease, when it started back in nineteen ninety-five, was for seventy-two hundred dollars annual, but it adjusted on an annual basis, so, I can't tell you what they're paying, you know, Mel or, or your financial folks can tell you what the amount is now.
Whatever it is, it's obviously, you know, remaining the one.
Yes, sir.
We're just gonna get a one-time, one hundred foot on the lease for.
It comes in that one, how you adjust for that little additional, thanks.
All right. Do we, uh, just for the council, I, I personally think we're renegotiating, do we pass any of this cost on to the, to the person we're doing a contract with? We pay a lot of attorney fees on this stuff.
We don't pass it on.
That's something we might look at in the future. I mean, we're consuming a lot of our time to the attorney for something that somebody else wants. I'd like to start looking at that in the future, if council agrees with that, is that?
Absolutely. If they're asking for a change, they ought to absorb our costs associated with the change.
With the fees. So, that's something, I think, making note of, uh, city administrator, if something comes up on, on renegotiation, I think they're gonna talk about recouping those fees.
And, and Mayor, you could have that as a part of this motion, if that's what the council wants to do.
You obviously can tally, tally that number.
Yes, sir. And just, uh, the motion could be to approve the Second Amendment Intention of Reimbursement to the City of the Attorney's Fees.
Was this a, now, was this a state mandate that you, when you showed us this, didn't something come out saying that it was kind of a mandate? I don't know if it was through the state.
It was a mandate.
And, so, they needed it, I mean, it's a kind of protective area, it was, I can't remember the whole conversation.
It's, it's not they're requesting it, they have to do it.
Yeah.
It's a little bit different than requesting a change.
All right. Is there a motion approved or denied? I, I guess, again, like I said, the, I think the council kinda has not, that we're gonna incur some costs on contracts in the future. We look at recouping the attorney's costs, not the city paying for it. On this one, I understand it's just an extension. Are we good?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ground lease agreement amendment to the original lease and let them add the additional one hundred sixty-three square feet to the existing lease agreement.
What's second?
I have a motion, second take, will it please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wal?
Yes.
I have number thirteen, boat slip construction before primary structure.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. There's been some debates, quite a bit of debate, actually, about allowing the boat slip to be constructed before the primary structure or home is constructed on the property. We've had discussion about it. Planning and zoning's had discussion about it. They did not come to a consensus during their meeting on July the seventh. And when there's no consensus, that means they stay status quo. At the current time, it's our opinion that a boat slip is an accessory structure to the lot. And if that were the case, it couldn't be constructed before the primary structure is built. So, it's up to the council to have debate and, you know, consider where we go from here.
Boat slip construction, uh, for primary structure is open to the public. Any public comment? Come on up.
Lisa Logan, Mexico Beach. I'm also a member of the Planning and Zoning Board. And my take on the July seventh meeting was that there was a consensus. I know that it was not noted in any of the meeting minutes, but, um, all five of us sat at the table and said, we do not believe that boat slips should be allowed to be built before primary residences. So, I don't know, I suggest everyone go look at that meeting tape. We, we did not take a vote on it, but we sat at the table and discussed it. We went through nine questions and discussed all nine of them, and we came to the conclusion in a verbal agreement that we didn't believe that boat slips should be allowed. And we had a number of other questions pertaining to boat slips that should be looked at. So, I don't know what to tell you, except that I respectfully disagree with the city administrator on that.
Thank you. And the city administrator respectfully disagrees a few, because a member of the planning and zoning has emailed the city council to say that he would have considered and allowed them to be built before the primary structure.
All right, any other comments from the public?
A lot of them, so.
Yes, sir, come on up.
I gotta go to the council. Uh, um, I purchased a lot of.
Name and address, please?
Justin Johnson, uh, one thirteen North Thirty-Fifth Street.
Thank you.
I'm here on the boat slip ordeal. I brought some drawers, I think, if y'all like to look over them. The city here setbacks, Mr. Greg, and then with the building department, I think we're seven and a half foot on the sides, correct? You know, if you take and maximize your, your structure, side to side, and you only allow seven and a half foot, my neighbor personally has got trees on both sides, and also, you know, my, my boat slip contractor's trying to build a, a boathouse behind the house that's already there, getting thirty, forty-foot pylons around the side of a house. I understand that the pylons are drove by, um, a barge out of the water. It just, it physically makes the, the construction process tremendously difficult. It just, it physically makes the, the construction process tremendously difficult. I personally own a house right across the street, so I, I don't know if there, if it's a money issue with, with, you know, with not, with not having a building permit on the lot versus having, being able to utilize a boat slip without having a structure there. Maybe take that into consideration if there's a, you know, an annual non-dwelling fee or something that could be added to the lot until the dwelling is permitted or, or built. But like I said, I brought these drawings, if anybody wants to look at them, it, you know, it's got, shows our boat slip, what we've got plans to do, and I would highly appreciate it if y'all could put some, put some common sense into the, to the construction process of, please.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank y'all.
Anybody else any comments?
Jordan Gutsy, Big Bend Docks.
Jordan, where do you live?
We have a, a Maryland, uh, Maryland Boulevard. Oh, really, the only thing I have is, I'm not, over the years, I'm not real sure how this has gotten here. We've built the boathouses here for 10 years and never really had a problem. If you go to the canal, there's, there's duplex or boat, boat slip duplexes where there's 15, one of those dockside, or dock, you know, dockside, 15 slips there with no, it's a gravel parking lot, there's no house there, it's never been an issue. The marina side, the last four years, I think, installed 16 slips without any houses on them, it's just DIA property that's a boat slip now to 16 different individuals. So the thing, when the council buys these properties, they're buying them for the fact of, you know, the, the Corps of Engineers has allowed them to use their property and put a boat slip on it, not, you know, I think it kind of, it's one of the, it's a change in property of where it's at. It's what come with the property is the, you know, the allowance of being able to have a boat slip. I don't, you know, to me, I don't see how it's a question, you know? I think it's just different because where they bought their slip, the, the actual property owner of where the boat slips going has allowed it. I think that changes, in my opinion. That makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Get and close the audience. Open discussion to the table on boat slip construction before primary structure. I did listen to the P and Z, all their comments. I'm going to give you my opinion. I kind of look at it a little bit different. I looked at it as, if I was going to purchase a piece of land that was 50 by 70 to build a home on, I could buy that in town probably at about $300,000. If I buy that on a canal, it's going to cost me a million. Give or take, 100,000, whatever. But my point is, if I want to get boat access to the ocean, I have to pay a little bit more. So to think that I can't build a slip, for me, would be insane, so. I always think, I always try to think of what's best for Mexico Beach, and I think Mexico Beach is a fishing village. I believe our canal is an asset for us, and we should utilize that asset by allowing boat slips. There is a question on primary structure, how that's written? If anything, let's, let's address that. Let's put a fine, if you don't get it done in two years, for $5,000, whatever the number is, come up with that type of solution, but don't restrict them from building a boat slip on their property. That's what they're buying. They want to access the ocean. Might he ask?
I would like Greg's opinion, since he's with the building department.
On what?
On, on whether or not he thinks that's okay to build a boat slip prior to the, prior to the primary structure.
That's the council's decision, it's a decision.
But he's sitting here.
He goes by rules.
It'd be nice to have a, a different opinion, while he's sitting here, can we not give his opinion?
Sure, we, we can, yeah, I just don't understand why we would want that, but, okay.
What are your thoughts on that, Greg?
So currently, as it's written, I, I, thank you, Mayor, I do not have an opinion as to should it be allowed or not, because it's really not my place. We have jurisdictions within our company that it is allowed, we have jurisdictions like Mexico Beach where it is allowed. I can see both sides of this argument. I know what we don't want in Mexico Beach. I also am a big believer in property rights. When you spend a lot of money for something, I, I, I see what the mayor's, I'm a big fisherman. If, that would be my take, is I, I'm going to live here when I retire, but for now, I want to come down and use my boat. So I see both sides of that. There are remedies for commercial construction, so if, I mean, I'm sorry, residential construction. So in your 50 by 75-foot lot, the exact verbiage of the LDR allows for you to build the boat slip first if you've already permitted the primary structure. So if we have a permit for the primary, you can build your slip because access has been a problem in the past. The gentleman's correct. Seven and a half feet, you're trying to get, even though most of the pollen works done with a, with a barge, you're trying to get a, you know, skid steer back or whatever you need. That has been an issue in the past, and due to the lot sizes, some people, you, you would be foolish not to maximize your building. So we, we do have a mechanism to deal with that inconvenience or that situation if it arises, if we know about it. So I will execute whatever the council decides, whatever the city wishes as far as boat slips. I know there's a lot of confusion about, well, you know, my neighbor put a roof on his. So we do allow for repairs of non-conforming boat slips that do exist, that were built before these rules. If you, if it's already there, it's existing, you own it, you lose your roof, you're perfectly allowed to go to repair to a limit, to a, to a point. That's really my take on it, is whatever the council decides and the city won't, I will do my due diligence to enforce. I see both sides of, of the argument, so I-
Would you think too, if somebody builds their boat slip and they have a permit to build their residence there, would there be a time limit that you have to build the house within a certain amount of time after you build the boat slip?
Sure. I, I can see many solutions that have been brought up. The final, you know, you could, you could take, you know, a guarantee or a credit, there, there are many, I think, legal ways to, to put that together where the owner knows, I don't know that I would put a two-year timeframe on it at this day and at where we're at right now, but whatever the city decides, that's, that's what I will enforce, that's what I will do my best to accomplish. But I, I think that there's, there certainly in this discussion should be room for some give and take, some compromises on both sides that could get us in a better position than where we are now, which is black and white. No. Is that, is that-
It does help, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. Just for the audience and, and the viewers, Greg from CPI, which is our, EPCI, which is our subcontractor, and he lives by the rules of the city and enforces those.
I had one more comment, too, just because as the city council, we always have to think of the domino effect. If we make one decision, how that affects other things. So I think there was some mention of Sweetwater kind of wanting to build their seawall, they wanted to build all, looks like 160 boat slips before they have to build any residence. Wasn't that in the discussion that we-
Whatever the number is, I believe that's it.
Okay, so, you know, we got to think about that. Okay, so, so down the road, are they going to say, well, I, I want to build all of these 160 boat slips, and whether they're going to build the houses there?
On a canal?
Right.
I think if you answered that correctly, if you said you want it, go ahead and build it before the home, yeah, you go ahead and do that. That's, that's possible.
But say that doesn't, we, you know, say it doesn't, they don't sell or whatever, so we got the boat slip sitting there and not the house. So we would have to think down the road how that affects other situations and other developments. Like, okay, we built 160-
Depending on where, how we put a limit on the fine, if we put a limit on, on the time to build it, that applies to the developers and it applies to the resident.
Okay, I'm just bringing that up because those are other issues that could come down the road.
Sure, I could help on that one.
Yeah, good.
Once, once Sweetwater gets everything together and applies, you know, for their development order, they would come in as a put or a planning a development, and in that development, the council would agree if they request that they would be allowed to put the boat slips ahead of the principal structure being built. So that would kind of be an area of exception to this rule. Yes, sir.
A few of my, my take on this, I've read the emails. I think first, we had a little discussion about this. The first thing we need to do is, are we going to categorize boat slips as accessory structures? And I ask that because that's the question. Mel had brought us some stuff, I know we're Mexico Beach, we're not Maine County, but a few surrounding areas where they actually specifically wrote in there that you could build a boat structure, the boat slip. It wasn't considered an accessory structure.
But we're here today because it is viewed as an accessory structure.
And that's what we're saying, but then I'm going to go into, so you read accessory structures in the LDR, and a lot of these things, you know, as far as the calculations on the impervious surface, the stormwater, has nothing to do with it. Setbacks, they are kind of supposed to, here, it's not written in here, but I would say the seven and a half continues to the canal. Other than that, I don't see the setbacks. And then, you know, it talks about maximum size of an accessory structure, the square footage of all accessory structures on a lot shall not exceed 75% of the primary. It's not on the lot, it's in the water. So, and when it goes to the water, you know, the rule is you have to give the DEP exempt to construct that boathouse. So you got these things, I guess what I'm getting at is, a lot of these rules do not apply to the boathouse, and they never have. And then another big thing, trying to get through it, if you, I've been here for 25 years, we've always had boat slips on the canal without houses. You can go to City Hall and look at the poster on the wall, the, the view from Debbie Hopper, hope I said it right, or Hooper, you know, from 2008, it's just a small shot of the canal, there's two slips there without houses, you know, things like that. After the storm, we proceeded to allow it to be built, so we've kind of always just, we've always allowed this, but it is not written in stone. I get that, it needs to be addressed in the book. It's just like some other stuff we're dealing with on some other things. We need to put it in here so everybody knows, is it allowed or is it not? And the only other thing I've seen was in your, if you go, and this is not under accessory uses or anything, but in our LDR, in our zoning districts, residential, low density, general residential, you can take it for whatever it is, it specifically says uses allowed with council approval, and it says docks, piers, wars, similar structures in city waters. Doesn't go any further than that, but it says we have the approval to oversee that. Now, that goes back to, are we going to consider these things accessory? And I'm not trying, I don't have a dog in the fight, I don't know anybody who's trying to do this now, but I know that it's historically been, this is what we have allowed, we've always had boat houses on the dock, and I didn't go down the canal, yesterday I was driving, I should have counted, there's, besides Sweetwater, I mean, there's not a lot of lots left that are undeveloped, and the, and the few that have put the houses on there, the boat slips, I'm going to call, I'm not going to call them houses because I'm going to, the slips, you know, they, most of them have landscaped the yards and, you know, I haven't seen any issues, there were some comments of maybe the, the, you know, the, the travel trailers are going to come and stay on the lots, I've never seen So I guess we need to get to, obviously, there's some, this has been kicked around for a little while, and we need to make a decision.
And I think with, with, just Jason's point is, if it's viewed as an accessory structure, I guess our decision is we don't want to view it as an accessory structure, and that would enable him to approve them based on all the other factors.
Well, the comment, or the thing that Mel brought, and I didn't bring it back with me from that one meeting, that when he pulled Maine County's, you know, and it said, that basically the wording was that boat slips wouldn't be viewed as an accessory structure. And that pretty much-
Look and change the boat slips.
Yes, sir. So I think this council obviously needs to take the words of our Planning and Zoning Board to heart in all, all considerations. But like you, Jason, I don't find any verbiage in the, in their development code that specifically addresses boat houses as accessory structures. And I guess, I, I need to be educated. The city administrator says that the canal is owned by the city, the actual physical canal is owned by the city. So if that's true, does the city control it, or does the Corps of Engineers control it, or does DEP control it? Do we know?
From what, it's always-
Greg, Greg's-
Greg, that's, we had this conversation, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Because I've, I've got a whole, I've got a laundry list, I've made a lot of notes reviewing for this meeting, so.
So the Corps of Engineers doesn't get involved a lot in our canal, there are size limits. So the exemption letter you mentioned is only, you can self-certify a residential dock. Now, we're not talking about the commercial docks, the gentleman referenced earlier, so they're, they're different. If you wanted to build just a marina, then that's, that's in a different ballgame. So residential docks, to get that exemption letter, you write DEP and you say, hey, this is my lot, this is all the circumstances here, and this is the size of it, this is, these are the plans. And they will say, okay, that fits the residential exemption for your personal dock, and it's not big enough that we really care about it, so knock yourself out. That's how, now that, these things are all separated from our LDR. Okay, so these are all state level actions. So I don't have a choice to move on, I, I cannot move on a project that, that requires that DEP, I have to have. And so I won't, we won't even think about it unless that's in the package. Once that's in the package, so we go through steps, so we start, the Corps of Engineer would be more in a, like your peer, some big, they're going to be really involved in that or, or some bigger projects. But so we start with, so that would be federal, then, so you've checked that box, then we hit DEP, you got your letter, that checks that box. That's all, all that has to happen, depending on the project, before I even look at it. They don't get a sign from me till these boxes are checked. So then, once I get it, then I have to go through the LDR, and I don't have the exact verbiage, but boat house, boat slips, I'm sorry, are, well, actually, it's, we're playing semantics, boat houses are considered accessory to the primary structure. Now, all I need is, if, if the city no longer wants to treat them that way, we remove that from that definition, and that solves the problem, for me, in, in this thing. That's it. You know, so that's-
Okay, so while you're standing here, back to Jason's point, I'm in total agreement that a boat slip, a boathouse, whatever we want to call it here for the purpose of this meeting, does not physically sit on the property, so it has no calculation based on impervious surface, any of that, none of that applies to it, quote, as an accessory structure. Now, you can say, argue, because it, quote, is attached to the dirt.
I would argue a little further than that. You, you own it, which is how you get the permission to build it and that. So while you don't own, if I get this wrong, correct me, Mr. Tim, please, you don't own the water of an navigable waterway, you own the dirt. So I can, I can come down my kayak all day long, and I'm not on your property. When I step off, I'm on your property. Crooked out, I can pull up out there, and as long as I don't get out of my boat, I don't have to show the Air Force anything. If they walk down there and I'm standing on that- If they walk down there and I'm standing on that beach.
Then you have to talk to them.
Right. So that's basically the, the rule of thumb that we, that we go by. So the boat slip, while you could argue it is not, it's owned by the city, so the poster on the city's letter, whatever, it is attached to a lot that you own.
Okay.
Okay? You pay to build it, you pay to maintain it, you pay to, just like your, you know, just like your CBOs, it's, it's, so that is the way that we view it, I view it.
Okay, now, just press pause for a second. So, having this discussion for the audience, both here and online. So, Justin, the first one, now you don't have to get a, you, you made the point that you only, you weren't, I don't know if you have plans to eventually build a house on that lot, but let's say he did. Is the city going to, going to take the hard line, and if he doesn't, or if we do want to put a hard line on it? Let's say we give the property owner two, three years, whatever the council agreed to, I'm sure he's going to put his means, and you're probably going to want water there too, because you're going to want to wash your boat, right? So that goes back to the utilities and the city, and how do we categorize these people that are using city services? Do we, permitting, you know, is it a construction, what do they do, and they don't have a toilet here, so they're not, it, it opens a lot of question marks. And also, I asked Mel this question the other day, and it's been stimulated by a lot of comments from residents over the last several weeks, that, I'm a fisherman, I'm a boater, I use the canal, I'm not fortunate enough to be able to afford water from a property. So I trailer, and I use the canal, and, look, I praise the good Lord, there are people that are that affluent, that can afford forty and forty-five foot boats. The question I have going forward for the council, and specifically Mel and I discussed Sweetwater, is, there again, I don't know, do we have regulations for the size, width? How are those regulated for these docks?
We do. You're not supposed to go out twenty percent.
Yeah.
About twenty percent in the navigable water.
More than twenty percent into the navigable waters.
Does that.
A third, a third, and a third. So let's, let's talk about Sweetwater, because that's a very good point, but understand this, first, they will be a pod, which will, they will create their own land development code, which is what that means, that you all will have a chance to read that, know what it says, and improve it during that process. So they won't necessarily be following all our rules, they'll be a little different. Okay, just like Windmark and St. Joe's bunch. Before we say, yeah, you can put a hundred and sixty boat slips in here, there's going to have to be, so that will involve the Corps of Engineers, the state, so when they, and if they extend that canal, especially the Corps of Engineers, so there will have to be some professional analyzing and feedback as to the boat traffic that the canal is able to handle, just like a.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, so, so there are controls already in what we're concerned about with those hundreds, we're not there yet. Much like the, the canal project, I, we, we heard them say, you know, we want every lot to have a boat slip, we're going to extend it, we're going to do all these things. We have no, I have no plate, so I can't see it, I just know that's their intent. Once we get to the design phase, I promise you, I will be.
But, but to your point, the drawing that's in City Hall shows a hundred foot wide canal, and so if it's a third, a third, a third.
Well, no, there won't, that, all right, you ever seen North Laguna?
Yeah.
Okay. Obviously, it's very wide, but you don't see boat slips and pier, there's some longer docks, you can, you can stretch out, it will depend on how they dig it. If they dig it like they did in the Everglades, straight down, it's a box, so you get open by the bank here at ten feet, you get the middle here at ten feet, it'll, that, that design will influence all of that. If they slope it like a big deep swell, then you might be a little further, so they take all that into, into consideration. If it's a hundred foot wide, there'll be a channel marker in the middle, should be.
The whole thing about navigation with docks on either side, and, and let's just say, me and you are really well off, and we've both got forty-five foot boats with twelve foot beams.
Yeah.
When you start taking off, it, it's going to be tight.
Yeah, and so that, that's the, all of those, we're going to manage the traffic in the canal, just like the, the traffic engineers manage, they will do the report, I will read it, if it meets the requirements of the state and federal government, if it doesn't, they'll have to redo it.
So that means we have done a traffic study in our existing canal?
No, I didn't say that. I said, on this project, we will be doing, but you got to remember, the existing canal is the existing canal, it, it is what it is, the lots are there. We're talking about extending the canal, that's a whole different, I mean, I may, well, I promise you, the federal government and the state will be.
That's all, that's all.
And what you said, though, with their pod, our rules won't apply to their pod.
They can choose, they will present to you a, a development package that will have their exceptions to the land development code, it could be setbacks. Windmark does not have the same setbacks as St. Joe, it could be distance between structures. Our LDR says ten feet, they can change that, five feet's the, the minimum distance for a building as far as the fire codes, they've ruined that. They can change setbacks, five foot rear, five foot side, I mean, there's a plethora of things, the landscaping, they can change all kinds of stuff. It ain't legal until y'all approve it. So the pod package will come here, you will take it under consideration, you'll have input, make changes, whatever you don't like, you'll reach a consensus, and that'll be their pod.
Got you. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Bringing on back to the primary structures that we currently have in the canal, and the ones you're asking about.
Can I help a little?
Yes, sir.
If I could, I hope to make this a little more clear, but it might make it more muddy, you know, that's the Mexico Beach way. Under some of our land use districts, under principal uses, it does say, the letter C, water-related or water-dependent uses, including boat ramps and fishing docks and piers. So that would tell you, well, maybe a boat slip maybe is a principal use. Then you go to number four, uses allowed with city council approval, that's what Jason alluded to earlier. Then you got to ask yourself, well, then what is a boat slip? Is it a principal, or is it not? You go to the definition under accessory structures, and it does list what a principal structure is. It says, the principal structure shall be construed to mean the dwelling unit, the house, or commercial use located on the lot that contains the principal use. So that's defined what the structure is. Under that, a boat slip wouldn't qualify. Under principal use, it says, the primary use on the lot is allowed in the zoning district within which the lot is located. That's where it gets muddy, because you got to think use compared to structure. Then, under the definition of accessory structure, it says, a structure of a nature incidental and subordinate to the principal structure. So there's where it's defined. The principal structure is the house, dwelling unit, or commercial. And then the accessory structure is incident to the, the boat, it would be subordinate and incidental to the principal structure.
Clear.
That, exactly. So I guess what, what we're getting at is that with the PMZ meets in September, we're going to bring up this section two of the LDC. So what I'm asking for the council now is, let us know which you prefer. If you prefer to make the boat slip something that you can approve and call it a principal structure or something, then let us know, and then we'll make the adjustment.
I guess, that's what we're here today, I mean, there's people that are actually have requests in to build right now. We have one or two that are ready to go. So, do we want to allow them to build prior to putting a primary structure on? We could have the attorney write up the ways that that reads, but that's what we're asking. Are we going to allow them to build a boat slip before their primary structure? The easy thing is, yes, we will. Maybe a little harder is put some restriction on it. And the restriction would be, would still require the, the primary structure in this amount of time, if it's not done, you'll find this amount of money. So, several ways to look at it.
What you're proposing, the mayor, ultimately will have to be a minimum of two lengthened regulations. And of course, factoring in all this, which you've not discussed yet, is, you know, a good bit of frontage that actually abuts the canal, according to the title search I had run, it's still owned by the city. So there are, there are gaps between lots and the actual canal, it's probably property owned by the city. And, and so, I had indicated as mayor that I was going to try to bring back some, some proposed policies to you all, to, to how to deal objectively with that situation, and perhaps some, some license agreements, similar to what the state has. I wasn't here when, when Mr. Parker deeded all those canals to the city, and I'm not sure how that interfaces with FDPC, because I've not had that conversation with them. But technically, you all got a deed of the canals. Or you got a deed of a hundred feet of canal, and in many places, the canal's not a hundred feet, so that's, that's the issue. But how you deal with it now is to direct the PMZ as to how you would like the language to look going forward, but until that language is written, technically, mayor, it, the definition of accessory structure would include anything that's not a primary structure.
Would, would apply, and can we say it doesn't?
That's correct.
So, question you brought, and I missed it, but you, when you gave this definition under principal uses, where it says water-related, water-dependent uses, including boat ramps and fishing docks and piers, so they're defining that as a principal use.
Right, not a structure.
But then you say, the principal structure, the last line says that it contains the principal use.
So then you define the structure as a home, or a commercial, or a dwelling?
There, there's a little inconsistency, no doubt about it, that needs, that needs to be looked at and evaluated.
But back to the, you know, original, what I was saying, I mean, it's, what are we going to do? We've always allowed it up until this became a point, probably back in October, somewhere back in the fall of last year, is that right, Greg?
I always told when I started, three years ago, that.
You were told.
Boat slips were considered primary structure, and I read it the same as, as you guys have. And I went down the use versus structure rather than home, and Mel and I did, and that won't wash out. Primary structure includes boat houses, unless there's something else there, and that's just the way that, that's how.
Yeah. And we have allowed boat houses, boat slips to be built, up until, we've issued permits up until last year.
Yeah, well, I have.
Last year, there was an issue?
I have issued a permit without direction from a city administrator for any boat houses without a primary structure. Unless they got, no, have, I take that back, if they permitted the house and the slip at the same time, sure. If I had a permit on a whole lot, four houses, we issue, we, we go ahead and let them build.
Which there is a time limit on a, a development permit and a building permit, what, six months?
Eighty days on your building permit.
Yeah, so, so there, you're talking about, when would this occur? Under the current thinking, it would, you'd have to build boat slip or boat house, and then within a hundred and eighty days, start construction of your primary residence. What you all are talking about is a different animal, and, and, and I may disagree as far as how much of a fine you could do, mayor, because again, you're talking code enforcement versus, versus fines, so, but you all really need to evaluate, if you're going to go down to some contingency like that, how you could address the timing, because that would be critical, and then the, the effect of what happens if they don't. I mean, if somebody pays a million bucks for the canal lot, they not actually front the canal, but the canal lot, then they may not care if they pay five hundred bucks for a fine, they may do it anyway. So, I mean, you've got to have some ability to regulate somebody who just doesn't want to play by your rules.
So how could you, how could you write that? I mean, how would that write?
Well, once they get it built, it's hard to unbuild it, mayor, that's the problem. And so, the, the historical check and balance of, you have to have a, a building permit and a development permit for single-handed residents, puts them on notice that they've done the due diligence to get to the point of building the house, and.
So we allow, so we allow, we allow the, the boat house to be built before this structure?
Within that six month wait, yes, sir. But you knew that, that you had somebody that intended to build that house. If you tell somebody today, go build your boat house, and come back to us when you're ready for a house, we all may be dead before that happens. So the real question from a policy standpoint, it seems to me, is, do you all want a city where you could theoretically have a bunch of boat houses with no upland residential structures on it? If the answer, and I know there's not many left, but, but, if the answer is, that's okay, then we can write it that way. If the answer is, no, we want a, we want a city that has a bunch of houses that have boat houses, then.
I think the council is probably the latter statement, is that true?
We don't want a city that's just boat houses.
Right, you want a city that has residential and, and boat slip.
Well, to me, and then this goes back to Greg, he's more of an expert on, on stuff than we are, but, you know, at some point, somebody's investing money to put their boathouse in, but the tax assessor doesn't automatically get some flag that they need to reassess the property because it's got a boathouse on it, it's an accessory structure, right?
He gets a, he gets a, if I'm not mistaken, now you're giving me a load of my skis as far as that ends our system, but we do send reports to the building, the property appraisers when we issue permits, that way they know to come and look at different lots, and that's a, yes, it would change the valuation of the lot.
So it would impact the tax.
Yeah, it would go.
Yes, sir. Yeah, but I, I think we're all in agreement, we don't, and there are only, what, four or five potential sites where they could put docks on our existing canal. I don't see, you know, what, putting some sort of dead stop on, okay, you can get a permit for your dock, but whatever that member of the council agrees to, eighteen, twenty-four months, if you don't, then, then fines, start approving.
Which we have to get okay with.
Well, that's, that's where I'm saying, the dollars may not equate to stopping somebody that.
That really just wanted to play by their boats.
That's right.
Well, my, my opinion, sorry.
I'm sorry, the only way you stop them, you don't let them do anything. That's the only way you stop them. The money may not matter to them.
Right. And y'all said, I mean, you included me, I'm still, I'm in the opinion of that we move forward and let, let them build their boat house before the primary structure. I think we need to remove the boat slip house name from the accessory structure in the LDR.
Only on canal.
Yes.
Lots.
Yes. That's, that would solve it. That's just my, I mean, we've always allowed it. I know it's, maybe it's been wrong, I guess, not in the, we didn't read it, but it's, I mean, I'm, I'll make a motion that we move forward with allowing, or actually taking what needs to be done, as like Bay County, is we take boat slips, houses out of the accessory structure category.
So your motion would be to go ahead and authorize me or city staff to draft an amendment to the land development code to remove boat houses and slips from the definition of accessory structure?
Canal.
On the canal. On the canal only.
Well, I'm not sure you'd have a boat house.
Well, I'm not sure either, but
Well, but that's We, we can live it to
Canal only.
Canal only.
Yeah, that's a, that's a slippery slope, right?
Yeah.
You say a boat house, maybe they've got a double lot and they've got a big pole barn that can be considered a boat house.
It has to be.
A single, single, single boat house for a single lot.
Yes.
It should, it should be written somewhere along the lines, those lots that have canal with ocean access. Something along that lines. So there's a motion for that. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion, a second?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And we still put the ton limit on that, is that correct? When you write at that order that you can put the ton limit to when they do the boat slip and then build a house, it would be as
Yeah, yes, and then it would be a code violation, but I'm, but I'll try to figure out if there's some other, that I'm not sure.
All right. Moving on to fourteen, which is doing more engagement letter. Mike?
For the council, um, we are in some good charter territory now, since we finished our last financial audit on time. We are now moving into a regular and normal audit schedule, which, there's an engagement letter in y'all's package to discuss. And that means that we can actually start our financial audit this fall instead of in the spring of next year. The terms of it, if y'all recall from last year, we had an issue where the, the contract was signed to do the work for the fiscal year twenty-four, and then we had four additional one-year options. We are now in option one for the first year. And the cost, I just kind of scratched it out based on what our audit costs this year. If you look at for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, our worst-case scenario, if we had multiple single audits for FEMA or for the state, the increase would just be thirty-three hundred and seventy-five dollars. To me personally and financially, keeping an audit firm that has four-plus years of our history is a lot more valuable than, than the, the slight increase of thirty-three hundred dollars. I've also spoken with some other firms, and if we did put out a, an RFQ, it would probably come in a lot higher than what is proposed on this paper right now. I have talked to a couple of firms, told them what we paid, and they said they wouldn't do it for that much. And if we have a chance
This would not exceed the original contract.
Correct. It, it just It's just that one-year extension with, with the term. Yes, sir. And so my recommendation is that we go ahead and accept the one-year extension on this as it's written up right now.
The one-year extension decision is not in that twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight?
No, that's, it's on a year-by-year basis. It's on a year-by-year basis.
Okay, any, any comments from the, to the public? Those public at the table, any, any questions at the table? James Moore done a pretty good job, but we really put him through the hoops on this last, this last year to, to push him to get the audit. And as you remember, we were talking about the audit being late, and in fact, pushed him enough to get that done. And he did a good job.
And we're actually in a, a good favorable position going forward with all these financial audits.
And you had made, or somebody had made a, a change to the contract, that this, this would be acceptable to the board?
Um
This being proposed?
What's that?
This is on the page of non-accursed services. Obviously, it says as a former city administrator, so
Right.
That, any of that cleanup would have to be done.
Right.
And I think, and James Moore actually made that.
Yeah, so whatever, whatever motion I would suggest with the cleanup of the
Changes.
Changes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve or deny that the, that the change better needed?
So, so we're gonna make a motion to accept the one-year extension with James Moore? And I'll, is that correct? And then what was the last one about changes?
There, there are a number of changes that are noted and would include those changes.
Okay, that would include those changes as mentioned.
Second?
I'll second.
A motion, a second, people roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
All right, everybody waiting for that? Citizens' comments.
Good morning, Captain Mitch Coleman, two Ten Fortner Avenue. I'm the tournament director of the Mbar Kingfish Tournament. We just completed our twenty-ninth year, July the twenty-fifth. I just want to say thank you, Mark, your crew. The facilities look great. I mean, the pavilion, they got out there, they had the edges trimmed back so our banners could be seen. I mean, the way, it, it just was perfect. They set it up very well. I'd just like to commend Mark and his team, Randy, Ruben, Pam, they were out there all day, in the heat, Thursday and Friday, getting everything ready and getting it set up. And I just want to say again, thank you very much. We had nothing but positive comments from, we had a hundred and twenty-two boats. Everyone thinks we have a first-class facility. And just want to say thank you on behalf of Mbar for the support we get from the city.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, citizens' comments are open. Good morning. Podium. Name and address, sir?
Russell King, one one six South Thirty-Sixth Street. And when I had my, got my building permit back in, I think, twenty fifteen, I had two water meters put in it. One standard water meter, one, I think is referred to now as a section three water meter, that I had just connected for outdoor faucets, for outdoor activity. And used that for a number of years. And then at one time, I did put an irrigation system in, had a backflow preventer, got the permit, did all that. But I, I didn't need that anymore. In fact, the backflow preventer I took out. And, and talking to the, to the city, to Mr. Garland, last year he sent me a letter to say you have to have your backflow preventer serviced. And I told him it's not connected to anything, it's disconnected. And he said it's still a DEP requirement to do that. So I contacted DEP and found out that I was not in compliance, which I didn't know because I didn't know about the backflow preventers that have to be on each faucet. This is a brochure out in City Hall. I didn't know about that, so I immediately went to, to Mr. Kathy's place and bought backflow preventers for all my faucets. So they're all protected now, and I'm in full compliance. I took pictures of that, provided it to Mr. Garland, I thought I was in compliance. But last year, he shut my water off on that meter. And then last week, after I met with the, the city manager, we talked about it, they took that meter out. And Mr. Garland said the only meter that's allowed is a irrigation meter, and gave me the city code, section three. And that's not how I read it. What it says is for secondary water meters for non-sewer-connected activities, which is exactly what I'm doing. Nothing to do with irrigation. I don't have an irrigation system tied to anything with the city. It's just secondary for my, for my house, for my faucets. I was denied a permit back then to put in a pool, but I like to put a swimming pool in, and other water uses as well have nothing to do with the sewer. Of course, if you put a irrigation system in, you have to put the backflow. But if you don't do that, what I'm told is required is this brochure that's there, which I did provide proof that I've got that, and of course, you could come and look and see. So what I'm asking is that I be allowed to have that secondary meter. It appears to be authorized by the city code, it's not connected to all irrigation, and I'm told by the state, that the people, two different people I talked to in Tallahassee, that that's totally legal. There is no requirement for a backflow preventer for your faucets, it's just the faucets have to have the backflow on there. Strangely enough, one of my faucets, the builder did put one in, and I'd never noticed it, didn't know what it was, until the state told me. So I'm in compliance now, and I'm asking that that be allowed to be done, if that's, if that's
Mr. Russell, did you get an answer from, from either one, the city administrator or
They just took the meter, they just took the meter out.
Okay, so, so me asking them questions, but not even
No, no, sir, that's all I got to say, is I'm requesting, because it's authorized by the code and I'm in full compliance, I understand.
Okay, if, if they've, they've already given you an answer and you disagree with it, probably our next step would be, is to get a legal opinion on it? So we'll probably have to gather that information, whatever we have, and get a legal opinion on it. And then we'll deliver you a message that either you agree with or don't agree with.
That'll be super.
Does that work?
That's fine, Mayor. Thank you so much for your time.
And anybody have any put at the table?
Well, just on those meters, so the one meter's your house, okay?
Yes, sir.
So it's isolated.
Yes, sir.
And maybe I'm getting too far away from the legal, but it's, I live here and do build and do things, but it's always been if you go and get that second meter, one, the impact fees are a lot less. So that's why they call it an irrigation meter. It may not be hooked to your meter, but that's probably what you have. And it was always been, from what I know, once you get that meter, it automatically triggers to put a backflow device on that meter.
That's not, I understand that
That's not what you're
That's not, for ten years, that's not what I had. In other words, I had two meters, side by side, one meter went to the house, regular, connected to the sewer. The second just went to outdoor faucets. But those faucets didn't have backflow preventers on there because I didn't know, well, one did, I didn't know to do that until DEP told me. But I guess the question is, if, if, is that second meter, is it to be defined as irrigation only? And if so, but that's not what the city code says. The city code says secondary water meters for non-sewer-connected activities. I like to put a swimming pool in, and I sure don't want to pay the charges, extra charges for sewer, for that, for that pool. And I like to have that outdoor meter to be used for outdoor activities, that, not irrigation.
All right, Mr. Russell, we'll go ahead and get a, a professional opinion from, from our attorney, get it written for you. Do you have any other questions? Any other citizen comments? Any more citizen comments about?
Nope, sorry. No, citizen comments about the whole, oh, okay. Sorry, excuse my disorganized comment. My name is Spencer Wonder, I'm a resident of Milton, Florida, but I do a lot of business here in the city of Mexico Beach. I run a land-based shark fishing tackle company, and it has been brought to my attention that the city of Mexico Beach at a prior council meeting has suggested regulations on shark fishing on the beach here.
You guys want to hold it down with that, please?
I strongly suggest against such activities. A, a significant portion of my business is done this direction from Milton, east of Milton towards your guys' coast, all the way down Cape San Blas, clear over the east coast. The Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission actually forbids municipalities from regulating fishing activities in the state trust lines, which the Gulf of Mexico is an applicable waterway. Therefore, you cannot legally pass regulations restricting fishing activities, even if it lies within Mexico Beach's municipality, because the water that it participate, that is utilized for that activity is public trust. Any action in that direction will result in legal action on the behalf of my company against the city of Mexico Beach. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any, any other comments from the audience? Go ahead and close the audience. Move to the table, and staff comments.
Don't we always? I got a number of things here. Number one, at the last meeting, I told the council and the public that the code enforcement officer would be here to talk about our processes for code enforcement and have a little presentation on, on that. Looking at our agenda, which had five pages, we knew the meeting was gonna be long, so we thought it best to hold off until the next meeting. So she will be here in a couple of weeks. We did get a request, or I did, rather, to sign a letter of support for the reopening of East Pass. And of course, if, if I did so, I would have to do it as an individual unless the city council agreed with it. In other words, I would hate to sign my name where I'm from if the council disagreed with it. So does the council have any heartburn with me signing a letter of support for reopening East Pass? Just want to make sure I didn't step on any landlines. One more, a couple more things. On our social media Facebook page, we took off the comments section there, because the purpose of the social media Facebook page for the city is disseminate information, and that's what the purpose is. When we have a notification that we have a sewer leak and we get snarky comments, that's not the medium that we want snarky comments. There are other social media places to do that, and we encourage you to do that all you want, but not on the city's social media page. Last thing, concerning the leaks that I just mentioned, we're, we're doing a couple of different things. The fourteen-inch sewer main has been in that ground for quite a few years, and we believe it to be nearer the end of its useful life. That being said, we have all these leaks, and we've had quite a few leaks lately, and quite frankly, have to pay a lot of money and overtime for the guys and girls to take care of that for us. So, we, for, well, last week it was, Garrett and I met with the Forte Rule Water Association. And what they are doing on our behalf is crafting an asset management program. And what that means, they are going to all of our water lines, sewer lines, lift stations, water valves, lines in and out, and they're mapping that for us at no cost to the city. Your next question is, why are they doing it and who are paying them? The answer is, that is a DEP thing. They get a lot of funding from DEP and the state revolving fund. Because what they'll do, once they get that mapping done for us, is they will determine a priority of what our utilities say. In other words, we think that the fourteen-inch main is probably gonna be number one on a list of items that need to be addressed, and we agree with that. Once that list and that asset management is complete, which will take between four to six months, then at that point, they will assist us in finding some grant opportunities and loan opportunities. You may recall, I mentioned something at the, one of the last budget meetings, that in other places we've utilized the state revolving fund with great success, and this is what that is. If they determine that we have a major issue, then they would help us get in touch with DEP to see if we could qualify for a low-interest loan from the SRF, or maybe even a principal forgiveness if we have certain qualifications met. So, so that is huge for us. Also, they will look at our water and sewer rates to determine whether or not we are, are charging a sufficient amount of money to the public to take care of these improvements. Because some improvements, you know, don't rise to the level of getting a grant, they're, you know, a few thousand here, a few thousand there. So they want to make sure that we, we have enough money to take care of, like replacing a pump or replacing a small water line. So that's, that's huge for us. Another item is, I have to pat Jason Adams on the back, he reached out to one of our county commissioners.
Couple of them now.
Couple of them now. And he, luckily, they had one of the, the chief infrastructure personnel in the truck when Jason was talking to them. And it turns out that a few years ago, and at this point, we don't know what a few years means, whether it was one, two years, or five, or whatever, but there was a grant that the county was working on, on our behalf, that would have on our behalf, that would have paid for the engineering for the replacement of that fourteen-inch line. Uh, it was a seventy-five, twenty-five split, in other words, the grant was seventy-five percent, we were twenty-five percent, uh, because that, uh, potential cost would have been over five hundred thousand dollars, that meant that the city would have to cough up over a hundred thousand dollars, and at the time, the city told them that we didn't have the money. At this point, uh, it appears that that, uh, particular grant could come back into play, uh, people from the county is gonna be reaching out to me at some point in the next few days, to determine if you want to go ahead and re-access that particular grant. So, we are moving on, knowing what our issues are, and we continue to be vigilant to, uh, make Mexico Beach better than it was. Thank you.
One of the, one of the budget items for the council's approval that's, uh, been approved to date and still needs to go forward, is about fifty thousand dollars for a grant rider, I can tell you that grant rider's gonna get on that right away, this probably is, is gonna be the council's priority to get them on that right away. Uh, council comments at the table?
About, about anything in general?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I know a while back, we talked about hiring that human resource firm, um, and is that active now, do we have a contract that's active that...
Oh, the HR firm?
The HR, I'm sorry, HR firm. So, if that's active, uh, how do we initiate that with the employees so they're aware of that and that they can use our services? Because if it's there, they should already know that, you know, so how, how do we go about letting the employees know that there's a human resource?
We're in the process of figuring out that, the next step.
If that's a confidential thing, they can go directly to the people and not have to go to any state?
Exactly, there'll be a, a number that they can call, and it'll be a private number, so they can call, well, they're not around other people.
So, if they have a concern now or from the past, that they would like to be addressed soon?
Sure.
So, that should be, that should come into force pretty soon.
Yes, sure.
That contract had the red line on it for that.
So, how would you, how do you think you would communicate to the staff? I mean, how would that be? Would you talk to staff members one-on-one, or would their supervisors convey that information to them, how would they be privy to that information?
And we have a staff meeting every Wednesday morning?
Okay.
And we would, uh, disseminate that information to this, the department heads, who will then disseminate that to the employees. That could be in the form of a, a meeting, could be in the form of a memo, something to that effect.
Okay, but, you know, I mean, if we have that in place, they need to know about it.
Indeed.
How long has that been in place?
Three weeks or so.
It's kinda long, I do.
Right, no question about it, but, you know, we have had budget stuff going on and stuff.
Yeah, a few things going on.
We all work for more than forty hours a week.
Okay, any other comments from the council? Very good, move on, mayor comments, young comments, I have today's, pure name dedication, twenty-ninth of August at four o'clock, that's the Alcathy Municipal Period, that's gonna happen at four o'clock on the twenty-ninth, and probably on thirty-second, so you can get a lot more information to come out on that. So, anything I add? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.